Rise for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the order of the agenda?
No.
No changes from staff this evening?
None from up here, none from staff, okay. Thank you. We didn't have a closed session, so we've got nothing to report there. And Council Communications and Announcements. We'll start with Mr. Grisilli.
On Friday night, I attended the 30th anniversary of the Adult Community Center with Councilwoman Clapper and Councilman Collins, and it was a wonderful celebration. And it's hard to believe, it's been 30 years that the building's been there, and it's evolved into almost like a community center in a lot of ways. And it also, I think, is a great example of, well, they also have a group, the Friends of the Adult Community Center, which they were celebrating their 20th, I think, anniversary. And it's a great application of public-private partnerships where people in the community come together to support with the city a wonderful endeavor. Also attended on Sunday, the San Mateo County Interfaith Public Safety Memorial Service over at Notre Dame Dean and Murray University, and that basically honors all the public safety individuals, police and fire, in our county who are deceased. And it was a very nice memorial service, and I think just reinforced in my mind the importance of our public safety people. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Clapper.
Yes, thank you. Last Thursday, I was at the farmer's market, at the city's booth, with three of the staff from our community development department, and got to talk with the people there at the farmer's market. They had on display information about the Transit Village and the Wheeler Plaza. So it was a good opportunity to get to hear from members of the community, their different thoughts on those projects. And this morning, I attended the San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Authority Governing Board, and it was the first meeting of the fiscal year, and they did the final approval of this year's fiscal year's budget, and talked about the upcoming work plan for this year. That's all I have to report.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just other than the Adult Community Center dinner that the three of us attended Friday night, I had an opportunity to go to the Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Meeting Friday morning, at which a presentation was made by the San Carlos School District on their proposed Measure H to provide funds for reconstructing our schools. And it was a very informative presentation. That's it.
All right. Thank you. And I do not have anything to report, so we'll move on to Item 5, which is Presentations. And tonight, we have a presentation of the city coin to a couple of fellows who worked very hard for us in putting in some park trails in a couple of our parks. It was just a while ago that we, it didn't seem too long ago, that we came up with a Parks Trail Master Plan. And I remember at that time, talking about getting some trails that would actually go in a loop, because we've got a lot of trails that are out and back. And that's what was done on these trail projects in many cases. And it's just wonderful to go up into Big Canyon now, and you can go out, and instead of having to go out and come back on the same trail, you can go out and come back on a different trail. Or if you go over to Eaton Park, the trail system over there, there's some more loops that have been created. And so there's a couple of gentlemen who were paramount in being out there with shovels and picks and other equipment, building 100 miles, if you can believe it, 100 miles of trails. I wouldn't think we'd have 100 miles of trails in San Carlos. We're only two miles one way and two miles the other way. But anyways, they put in over 100 miles of trails, and six bridges, and just really improved our park trail system. So if I could meet these gentlemen down here, if they are here tonight.
Just a slight correction, it's eight tenths of a mile and about 130 steps.
Slight correction. Hard to believe, too. You didn't, I didn't either.
It was 100 hours.
Well, I can tell you this, Tom. This is, by the way, folks, this is, let me, well, let me get it up here. You do? Oh, okay. So this is Tom Morse and Jared over here, Gerald, I'm sorry. And Gerald, give me your last name again.
Crawford.
Crawford, thank you. So these two guys, my understanding is, most times, they got up early in the morning. Did you meet for coffee or something, or what?
I don't know.
No, you don't do coffee, okay. You're like Mr. Grisilli, he just does orange juice. But these guys got up early and went out to the parks where these trails went in, and hit it early, because it gets hot really fast in the summer. And a lot of this was done in the summertime, my understanding, is that right?
Yeah, between March 22nd and July 29th.
Okay. Well, you don't need a mic, do you, Tom? You've got this deep, good voice. And so they would work until about noon time, and then when it got too hot to work, they would call it a day. But I was even out on one of the trails in Big Canyon one day with my son, and we're headed out, and who do we see coming the other way? It's Tom and his little army of volunteers. And just another little quick story about these trails. On one of the trails that my son and I went on, and you can tell my son and I, he's a nine-year-old, we do a lot of hiking in the San Carlos Trails. We were on one of these trails, and we were going to come up with a name for you on one of them, because, or whoever does the naming, because we walked down this trail, and we hadn't gotten very far on it, and we saw a lizard. Now, usually, these lizards just dash away from you quicker than anything, but this lizard stayed there, and we bent over and reached down, let it crawl up on our arms, and spent about 15 minutes with this lizard. It was really an experience of, you know, connecting with nature, if you will. And then one other time, we were on the same trail, and I don't know if it's because it's so new or what, but the wildlife is just crazy out there. And we were hiking along the trail, and here comes a huge hawk, just flew right under the canopy of the trees, right over our heads, so much, so close, that we could hear the feathers, you know, going through the wind. So just a great experience, and I'm sure there's going to be many more great experiences for San Carlos residents to enjoy these trails, and they have these two gentlemen to thank for it. So let's give these guys a round of applause. How about you? Any stories before I give you the coins and we do the honors?
I invite everybody to go out, take an effort on, they're mostly designed to be, as I originally say, for the dog walker and the hiker and the jogger, so they're immensely flat, and so it's, you can enjoy yourself rather than huffing and puffing kind of thing. So it's a nice, good, good little piece of open eye exercise, and gets you to see a different part of San Carlos.
Anything, Gerald? Nothing? Okay. All right. Well, our former mayor, Ahmad, came up with, Omar Ahmad, came up with these, the idea of these coins, and they are meant for special individuals like this, who do things for the community that are extraordinary and going the extra mile, as it were, no pun intended. So let me see if this says, open that up and see if it has your name on it. I don't know if it does or not. No, okay, so it's just city coin. Not just a city coin, but they don't have the name on there, so, which is a very nice thing to have, right?
Yep. I'll invite you out there sometime.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's a very nice touch. All right. That brings us to Item 5B, which is Presentation on Samtrans Service Plan.
Mayor Grocott, councilmembers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk with you for a few minutes tonight about our Samtrans service proposal. My name is Jamie Ackman, I'm the Communications Manager for Samtrans. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a draft. This is a service proposal that's come out of 18 months of community outreach. We have talked to our riders, we've talked to various civic and community interest groups to arrive at this draft proposal, which we're now taking out to all of you in an effort to gather a final round of feedback before we take this to our Board of Directors towards the end of the year for finalization. This won't be final until we've heard from all members of the community, and I want to stress that. The plan's purpose is to really do three basic things: give riders more of what works, less of what doesn't, and try some new things. Our county and its demographics have changed dramatically over the last 10 years, and coincidentally, it's been 10 years since the last time we looked at our service model. So it was time to respond to some of the changing commute patterns and travel challenges that San Mateo County has today. Because of population growth, because we have many aging-in-place seniors, and because we have new areas of employment that have grown over the last 10 years, we needed to find new ways to serve those areas. What we found when we started looking at our system was that about 60% of all of the bus trips begin and end within San Mateo County. And yet, we have a lot of service, and we're spending a lot of money to carry riders out of San Mateo County. That didn't make sense. We found that about four of our routes were serving more than nearly 50% of our total ridership. And as a result, there was a tremendous amount of demand for service along the El Camino Real, where those four routes operated, but also a great need for east-west service to bring riders to that core back them. So with those issues in mind, we embarked on this service planning proposal to streamline service, improve frequency, add some alternative services, all with the goal of increasing our ridership. There was another consideration that had to be part of this process, though, and that was really the fine balancing act that we find ourselves in with our budget. There are some key financial considerations that we needed to carry forward in this process, but it's important to emphasize that the service plan that we're proposing doesn't resolve these issues. It just puts us on the path to resolving these issues. So we needed to address our structural deficit, which is a result of debt obligations and the ongoing need to fund the Caltrain service, and the fact that our Samtrans ridership has been trending downward for some time now. This will, intends to fix one element of that. We hope that we'll be increasing ridership with this proposal, but we have other pieces of the puzzle that we're now considering to address the debt obligations and the Caltrain dedicated funding challenges. This proposal was about taking what we have now and doing more with it while still living within our financial means. So the wellness program gives us a strong foundation for continual improvement. It allows us to adapt and flex as riders' needs change over the next 10 years in a way that we weren't really able to do with the existing service model. It lets us layer some alternative new services onto what we currently do, using different vehicles, less fixed route, more demand-responsive kind of service. And it allows us to address our financial considerations in a healthy way. This is what we looked at. This is where we started, when we started looking at our ridership. You can see, the most productive routes are the routes on the far left-hand side of the chart. Most of the, the top four performing routes operate along El Camino Real. As we trend down, those are the routes that are, have the lowest ridership, according to our system. The routes in yellow are community, which means they don't connect to any other services. The routes in black, or the one route in black is our express route. And then the routes in red are local services that may cross community boundaries, connect with BART, connect with Caltrain, or connect with other services like VTA in Palo Alto or Muni in San Francisco. So we needed to address this, because we have a trend line that's not healthy in terms of our ridership. 65% of Samtrans routes are operating below the system average for both financial effectiveness and productivity. That means the number of riders that we are carrying, the cost of passenger boarding versus the subsidy for passenger boarding is how we measure financial effectiveness. Productivity is measured by the number of boardings that we get per hour that that bus is in revenue service. So most of them were falling in the lower-left quadrant. We needed to address that as part of this service plan. So the proposal looks at four key areas: improving service where there's high demand along the El Camino Real; enhancing service in high-demand areas based on population and job-growth projections and existing population and job-growth challenges; modifying services where they're either underperforming or could be made more effective by some realignment; making some schedule changes to better meet with other services; making some minor service reductions, and I want to emphasize that, there's only five routes that we're proposing for elimination as part of this proposal. Those are the five discontinued services. And then implementing some new routes in alternative service pilot programs. And San Carlos is a candidate for one of those. This is what the South County proposal that would impact San Carlos residents looks like. The routes that, these are all the routes that we currently operate. The top four, 72, 73, 83, and 85, would receive, would see no changes at all. There's only one route that is proposed for elimination, and that's the 280. There is an alternative to the 280 for those riders. They can use the 296, which is actually going to be improved over its existing frequency to a 15-minute service, within a quarter to a half a mile of the existing 280 route right now. And there's an East Palo Alto Shuttle that serves the southern end of the 280 for the passengers there that operates along Pulgas Avenue, where that coverage will be lost. The rest of the proposals you see here are minor modifications or realignments. You also have a large sheet in front of you, an 11-by-17, that talks specifically about these service scenarios and recommendations as well, and you can take a look at those at your leisure. The main thrust of this proposal is to enhance the El Camino Real service. So we are talking about making it a simpler, easier-to-use service by combining the two main routes that serve the El Camino Real. By doing that, we can improve the reliability of those services, we can increase the frequency, and therefore grow ridership. We're also talking about modifying the KX and the 292 and the 391, which all operate into San Francisco. That is very, it is a very expensive service for us to provide because of the additional miles it takes to operate into San Francisco and the long layover times that we have to pay operators for while they're in San Francisco. So it makes it a less cost-effective option. What we're proposing to do is to eliminate off-peak trips into San Francisco on the KX and the 292, and all San Francisco service on the 391. But there would be no change in the late-night 397 service that people use to get out of their jobs in the city and down onto the peninsula. So the public outreach process has already begun. We're here tonight, as we are going to be with, at all of the city councils throughout the county. We're going to be meeting with rider groups, we're going to be hosting public forums, we're going to be meeting with community groups, rider, transit-dependent groups, and finally, hosting a public hearing before our Board of Directors. But we're here tonight to give you an opportunity to begin thinking about this proposal, so that you can comment to us with your concerns, questions, or invite your members of the community to talk with us directly about what we're proposing, and encourage them to be involved in this process. If any members of the public are interested in learning more, getting involved, they can follow the process on our website, samtrans.com/ssp, or they can use any of these vehicles for contacting us, and we'd be happy to talk with them at length. And with that, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions or comments at this time?
I have a question. Could you define what pilot service is?
Sure. So we're still in the process of defining some of the issues that will, I'm sure you'll have questions about as part of the pilot service, but what we're proposing is a territory-specific demand-response service, similar to what the disabled community has access to with paratransit. They could call and schedule a trip on a, either a shuttle or a larger 40-foot vehicle. We would serve a service area, so members of your community who wanted to, for example, get from the foothills down to the Caltrain station could schedule a trip. We would not be able to travel out of the service area, so there would be some limitations to that service. This is a pilot project, but we're proposing this for San Carlos and Pacifica, two areas where we think there is enough demand to warrant this kind of alternative service model, and to address underserved areas of the community that have needed more service for some time now.
Wouldn't, isn't Ready Wheels, wouldn't that be the same service as Ready Wheels?
Yes, but with Ready Wheels, only disabled passengers have access to that. This would be a service that anyone could take advantage of.
I thought it was seniors that had an access to Ready Wheels.
You have to be disabled. It's not just senior.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said, do you have to be, you can, if you're a senior, that doesn't necessarily mean you use Ready Wheels.
Correct. You have to, so you're, there's a process for qualifying for Ready Wheel service that involves getting a doctor recommendation. Many seniors need that kind of service, because they're unable to walk the distance from their home to a bus stop, but some seniors that are still vital wouldn't be eligible.
I was just curious, and because of gas prices going up so much, I know Caltrain ridership is up. Any thoughts or ideas as to why the general bus ridership has been going down?
Well, there's a couple of, there's three areas where we believe they're putting downward pressure on our service. The first is that the demographic profile for a Caltrain rider is different than the demographic profile for a Samtrans rider. So the high-tech industry, white-collar jobs have come back at a faster clip than the lower-tech, blue-collar jobs have. And the two services serve a very different rider. So that's part of it. The second part of it is that we believe that we're not serving the areas where people really need to go. So they are jumping off of Samtrans service and using Caltrain, or carpooling, or looking for alternatives. And that's one of the reasons that we're looking to realign our service model, in the hopes that we can get people to the job centers that they're trying to reach.
And I take it, your bus service goes to all of the train stations?
Our bus service serves all of the train stations, and in fact, with the realignment that we're proposing for the El Camino Real, we will, the one bus will serve all stations, as opposed to right now, where there's four buses that serve different groups of stations. So it's more complicated for the rider. The goal is to make our service easier and more commuter-friendly.
Sorry. I noticed that Caltrain has an iPhone app. Is there a Samtrans iPhone app?
No, but that is something that we're working on, actually. It's in development.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I just have one question regarding the ridership that you mentioned, regarding train riders versus bus riders, and specifically to the El Camino. Why would a rider jump on a bus versus jumping on the train, given that the route is parallel?
There are a couple of reasons that a rider might choose bus over train. First, during the midday in particular, we have a better frequency with Samtrans buses than we do with Caltrain, which operates about once an hour right now. Second, it can be cost prohibitive for some riders to use the train versus the bus.
Has Samtrans, since they control both, have they looked at what it might take to either subsidize those riders, put them on the train, and eliminate that bus service so that you can use that, the resources and energy towards other routes?
I think we would look at an entire, we would definitely consider those kinds of things. That's an interesting comment, and something that I would take back to the planners. If you would like to continue to have that conversation, we can certainly open a dialogue about that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
No other question? Do we have another question down here?
Yeah, I was just curious, when you were talking about what the public outreach would consist of for the public workshops, could you give us an idea of how many public workshops and where the locations are going to be, and how the scheduling of those will accommodate people's different work schedules and ability to attend those workshops?
Sure. We're going to, we're going to have two prongs of outreach. There will be several different workshops, some at community colleges, and they'll be scheduled at different times during the day. So some will target after-work hours to try and accommodate people coming home from work, and evening students. Some will be during the day for regular community college students. And then we will also be having specific public outreach meetings in different parts of the county, so we can give some geographic opportunity for everyone to attend. Those will all be in the evenings to accommodate people's work and school schedules. In addition to that, we'll also be using regularly-scheduled community forums. So for example, we'll be working with groups like the Mid Peninsula Housing, and, you know, a group out of East Palo Alto, to use their meetings as an opportunity for people to come, so they don't have to come to an additional meeting on the, in their already-busy schedule.
Thank you.
Very good. And just one contact you might have, that you might want to make, is in this city, on the east side, that we do have a neighborhood association, and I know, I don't know about the bus, I know a lot of those folks use the train to commute to work, and you might find some that would be interested in what's going on with the bus system as well.
We'll be sure to outreach.
You could probably go through our city manager to get contact with that organization.
Sure.
Greater East Side, San Carlos Homeowners Association.
We met with them on other issues. I've got a relationship with Ben Fuller, so.
Very good. Okay. With that, thank you, and move on to the next item.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And the next item is with John Hoffman and Tom Davids, and some other folks here tonight. Excuse me? Leonor, we'll do a presentation on Sister City Report to Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It's a privilege for the Sister City group to meet with you tonight, to bring you up to speed as to what's happening with our organization. We were chartered by the city council in October 1988, and at that point, we became recognized as an official agency or group of the city. The Sister City program, however, started way back in 1956 by General Lloyd D. Eisenhower, when he became president, decided that this is a good opportunity for countries to meet and work together, and so, and so the movement was born. Between 1956 and 1988, a good number of communities jumped on the bandwagon. When we were chartered, that year, there were over 800 U.S. cities involved in the Sister City program. They had a population of 90 million, and there were linked to over 1,200 communities in 88 countries around the world. And so you see, this is a broad-scale program, and we're proud and privileged to be a part of it. Our program started in 1988 with a relationship with Croydon, Australia. And Croydon, Australia was our first sister city, followed some years later by Scandici, Italy, followed by San Carlos, Nicaragua, and then by, Oketoks, yes, Oketoks, Canada. And now we have two additional sister cities that we will discuss with you tonight. During the time where we've been developing the program, we have engaged in art exchanges, we have engaged in exchanges of government employees talking to one another about how government works in their community. We have student exchanges, and we've had visitations from various people, and we to them. So we have been active. All the cities I mentioned to you are now inactive, and it's time to move on and develop a couple other relationships. And so tonight, we're going to talk about Metapec, Mexico, and Amur, Japan. But before I do that, I just want to direct your attention to the screen. Our annual fundraiser is this Saturday. This is our Taste of Midly, the 16th Annual, and we would invite you all and This is our Taste of Italy, the 16th Annual, and we would invite you all and anyone in the audience, as well as at home, to join us. The cost is very modest, at $25 a ticket. That includes samples from the various restaurants that you see listed there, plus a glass of wine or water. We meet in the downtown park at Lower Street, across from the B of A, from 5:00 to 6:30, and hopefully, many of our audience can join us there. We do have a limited number of tickets available, so best you make your purchase early, and we would appreciate seeing all of you there. So, now, I'd like to turn it over to two of our representatives. Leonora Urbain is our president of our committee this year. Leonora is fostering a relationship and nurturing a relationship with Metapec, Mexico, and she'll be followed by John Hoffman, who is our coordinator for the city of Omura, Japan. So, let me turn it over to Leonora. And Leonora, I think, there you go.
Okay, good evening. My name is Leonora, and I thank you very much for hosting our presentation. I am from Colombia, South America, and I moved here into San Carlos in 1997, and I joined the San Carlos Sister Cities because I support developing friendships with international communities and promote foreign language learning in the children of San Carlos. So, Metapec is south of Mexico, is about 1 hour and 15 minutes south of Mexico, and it rises amidst the central Mexico Plateau, perfect balance between the countryside and modernity. Farms and barns have slowly transformed into contemporary housing and commercial center, and that is due to the fact that in 1985, there was an earthquake in Mexico City, and now, the population of Metapec is 400,000, because the people of Mexico City moved to their country homes because of the earthquake, and they were realizing that traveling from Metapec to Mexico City was not a long ride, so they now established their residence in So, you have 40% of the native people in Metapec are, 40% are natives, and 30% from Mexico City, that's why. And the rest are from Argentina and Spain. The socioeconomic demographic, you can see, is about 64%, is upper-middle class and middle class. The education, more than 465 centers of education. We visited, John and I visited Metapec in November of 2010, and I was very impressed by the centers of education that they have built, and they have about, well, 465 centers of education, and that's why we want to promote student exchange. Let's just go. Oh, the other way, sorry. Okay. The crafts in Metapec also were very impressive. Metapec is a town rich in popular art, with artisan creativity as its main source of income. And the Tree of Life is the typical art piece of this town, representing the life and daily activities of its people. So, he's building a Tree of Life, and I, one of the gifts that we received was a book of the pieces of art that had been internationally known and sold around the world. And so, this, we either will go to the library of San Carlos, or we will go, we will give it to the History Museum. So, this craft dates to the 800 B.C. This is, let's see here. Okay, so what's happening now with Metapec? In November 2010, two board members of the, John and I went and signed some documents with the mayor of Metapec, and they, in return, came here and met with our mayor at that time, Mr. Omar, Amat, and signed the documents as a sign of reciprocity in 2011. Then, we also had, in 2012, we had visitors, sorry. Is this this way or this way? In 2012, we had, we have hosted many visitors from Metapec so far. Two educators came because they were curious to see, we sent them an email about the Chicken's Mall, the oldest PTA in San Carlos, and they were very curious, and they were very impressed with the, with the idea of attending this event. And also, coincidentally, Stanford University had a workshop on education, and they were invited, and so, they attended, and they felt that they had made interesting connections with people in the conference, and also by visiting the high schools here, also learn more about how the high school students and the, and the different places that students go to for university education. So, they made good connection with educators in the area. Then, we have, then we also hosted Lucy Medina, who was a mayor in Metapec, and she just came with her daughter, who is a director of one of the government organizations, Department of Natural Resources? She's the, well, anyway, she was for the, for the government in Metapec. And we also hosted, we're going to host Rosario Medina, who is a community leader, and she's going to talk at the San Carlos Library on Beyond the Cartels, the Mexico You Need to Know, and that is to promote, we want to promote Metapec as a place where parents feel safe to send their children in exchange, in an exchange, student exchange. The San Carlos Sister City also is planning, and so, I invite the community to attend this talk on Thursday, September 13, at 7:30 at the library. We have, in our future, it is our hope that, as our Sister Cities, that we continue to develop diplomatic relationships, as well as set forth dialogue and forums on the following topics: education, business development, marketing activities, environmental technologies, intercultural dialogue, sports programs like mini-soccer tournaments, organized cultural salons to promote young artists from San Carlos, music art, cooperations between the Sister Cities, and invite artists to paint murals. I think, here in San Carlos, there are some alleys that, you know, the walls are clear, and I think it would be nice to have some art from our local artists and from our guest artists, and perhaps send artists over to those, to Metapec to paint in their, in their downtown area. So, this is just a note to promote to all of you the interest in visiting Metapec. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leonora. Mr. Hoffman.
Oops, wrong one. Wrong one. Christine?
Christine?
Have a bit of help, please. Mr. Mayor, council members, konnichiwa. I'm involved with the relationship between Omura and the prefecture in southeast Japan, about as far, sorry, southwest, about as far as you can get, and it's very close to a much more familiar city, Nagasaki, one of the two that was bombed during the Second Omura is a city of 93,000-plus. It is a large city in terms of its spread, unusually so for Japan, and it sits between a set of mountains and a bay. The city handles a great many of the requirements for their citizens. You'll see in a few minutes a picture of their offices. They employ 1,000 people, the city does. 600 of them are full-time, and 400 of them are part-time. Most of the 400 part-timers are ex-military or related services, and it's a make-work project to find them a part-time job with the city. This is the most famous mountain in Japan, Mount Fujiyama, normally called Mount Fuji. I climbed to the peak of that as a young man, but wouldn't do it today. The, the city, at the time I was there, celebrated their cherry blossom festival. This is a very big deal in Japan, and the Japanese word for it is hunami, which really means not only a celebration, but a party. The trees, the plum trees had finished, but the blossoms for the cherry trees were everywhere in great profusion, and many people were out, you know, celebrating the fact. This is an evening where people spread plastic tarps on the ground in the park, the trees are lit by lights, and hunami, although it's said to be the celebration of the cherry blossom, is one hell of a good excuse to get blotto. A huge, huge amount of sake and other alcohol is consumed, and people occasionally look at the trees. That was my personal observation. Yeah, I don't know what I've done here. A little more help, please. We've gone back to Metapec. Oh, that was it? Okay. Well, thank you for trying. The relationship with Omura was finalized very recently. Many of you attended, and I thank you for your attendance at the tree planting, as well as the signing ceremony. We have had two delegations from Omura. My wife and I constituted the delegation from San Carlos that went there earlier this year, and we had a very successful student exchange. First, first year, so we started small with just a few students. They were home-hosted here in San Carlos, and next year, our students, our San Carlos students will be hosted by families in Omura. So, if you know somebody who is potentially interested, it's high school age, about 16 to 18, some young person that would be responsible and make a good representative, please ask them to contact me, because we very shortly will be in a, in a selection process. That really is all that I can pass on to you at the, at the moment, and I will close by simply saying, arigato gozaimas.
Thank you, Joan.
Oh, one, one other thing.
Yes.
One other thing. When the Sister, when the Taste of Italy was up there, we want to make sure that people know there are two places to buy tickets in San Carlos, both on Laurel Street, The Chef's Shop, and also Clock Tower Music.
So, there you have it in a nutshell. Any questions? We're anxious to proceed, and we will be proceeding with both these communities. You'll hear a lot more about them, as will our citizens around town, and look forward to everyone participating and being involved in the Sister City relationship. So, thank you for this opportunity, and we'll carry on.
Just have one question, Tom. I saw, it looks like there's going to be wine at the Taste of Italy.
Correct.
But no sake, is that right?
No, no sake.
Not this year?
This is, yeah.
Wow.
I'm really made to taste.
Just in honor of Omura, though. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, folks. Thank you.
All right, that brings us on to public comment. I do have a couple of speaker cards. Casey Byer, I think it is, and Michelle Lindemann, I believe. So, a few, two speakers would like to come up, address the council.
Mayor and council, my name is Casey Byer. I represent the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and I'm here today to invite you to the 8th Annual Applied Materials Turkey Trot down in San Jose. Last year, 87 residents of your great community participated in that event, of over 22,000 people that ran in, in San Jose. It's the activity of three organizations that received donations from the event, the, which we like to call Walk or Run for Health, For Hope, and For Home. The Second Harvest Food Bank, the Housing Trust of Santa Clara County, and the Children's Health Initiative received funds through our organization. And over the last seven years, we have had close to $2.2 million that have been donated to the cause of those three wonderful organizations. This year, we expect about 25,000 walkers, runners, family members. They'll be provided services by over 2,000 community volunteers, and we expect to raise about $700,000 for those three organizations. It's a fun and healthy way to begin your holiday season, where all family members can participate. It includes a fun run for kids, a walk, a 10K runner walk, and several special competitions that are embedded into the program. There's the Lucille Packard Children's Hospital Kids Fun Run, for kids 2 to 9. Fry's Electronics does one, does an event for the quickest cop and fastest fireman. Virgin America and San Jose Mercury News have a costume competition, where the Virgin America awards special flights to anywhere they fly around the world for the winners of that event. Another event that we encourage all community participants to bring canned goods to the program. That is sponsored by a company called Synoptics, canned for company. And then, finally, the fourth one is my colleague here, Michelle from Brocade, is going to talk to you about the Mayor's Cup Challenge. Michelle?
Hi, I'm Michelle Lindemann. I'm actually a San Carlos resident, and I also work at Brocade. So, as you just heard, Brocade is proud to present the Fourth Annual Mayor's Cup Challenge as part of the Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. Last year, as Casey had mentioned, we had 87 community participants from San Carlos, and we hope to have more community members, as well as city officials, participate this year. So, for the Mayor's Cup, each city can earn points for the mayor, vice mayor, planning commissioners, city managers, and council members participating.
Can we walk?
You can walk. You can walk, yeah. Run, bring your kids, push strollers, it's, it's really a great time.
Can we do push?
The Mayor's Cup Challenges, Challenge recognizes Silicon Valley cities and towns in four categories based on size, and San Carlos will participate in the small-city category, along with Belmont, Saratoga, who was the winner for 2011, East Palo Alto, Foster City, Los Altos, Los Gatos, and Menlo Park. The winning city or town for each size category will receive the Brocade Mayor's Cup for prominent display in your lobby, recognition at the race and in post-race press, and bragging rights for the entire year. So, we hope that you'll get up Thanksgiving morning and join us for the Turkey Trot, as I know that the Mayor's Cup will look great in the mantle here at City Hall.
So, a couple of questions before you go away.
Sure.
How did Saratoga win it last year? What did they do?
Well, so, they had.
What's the bar?
They had each, each of you participate, because you get points. So, and I believe that.
City manager?
City, yeah, and the city manager, yeah. And I believe that you get more points for the mayor participating.
Okay.
So, that, yeah, so that, that's how, it's all point-based.
So, it's based on participation.
And like we said, even if you don't actually attend, but register, you earn points.
And where does this take place again?
It's downtown San Jose.
Downtown San Jose.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what's the date?
Thanksgiving morning.
Thanksgiving morning.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanksgiving morning.
Yep.
All right. So. All right. Now, how far is the event?
So there's a 5K and 10K run, or walk.
Do you get extra points for going 10K versus 5K?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're going to win this year.
You should.
Small cities category.
Yeah. Would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're going.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Well, like you said, you could join the event with Bob, and Bob will be in the chair, and you can push him.
You can push him, yeah, exactly.
All right.
Extra points for that.
Extra points, that's right. Okay, next item is approval of the consent calendar, which is approved as a basket, if you will, of items under one motion, unless somebody wants to pull something out of the basket and have it discussed separately. And I'm going to do this at the risk of my council being unhappy with me, but I wanted to pull the minutes from the July 9 meeting. So that's item F. And that's it. So not too bad. Anything else?
I was interested in pulling item J, since it was revised.
Okay, very good, yeah. That's the fire agreement, so we've got item F and item J. And I don't see anybody else jumping up and down over anything else, so we'll take a motion that does not include items F and J then.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent calendar, items 7A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, that brings us then to reports to council. And we have one item here, which is the results of a survey done by Rethink Waste, Single Family Dwelling Residential Customer Satisfaction Phone Survey on Garbage and Recycling Services. Very good.
Let me dial it up. Mayor and members of council, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. Earlier this year, Rethink Waste hired the firm of Godby Research to do a survey of residents throughout the 12-member agency of Rethink Waste on their satisfaction with the new Kart Smart services that began last year. And it is their intent to do a survey of that type every two years, roughly, very similar to the customer satisfaction surveys the city has been doing. As part of the survey process, the board decided to include, as part of the survey work, approximately 200 residents in each of the 12-member agencies so that you could get a scientific result within each agency. At the end of the survey, results were sent out to each of the cities and each of the council members, both agency-wide and for the city. In addition, the SBWMA board made available the opportunity to have a presentation of the agency-specific results to all 12 agencies. And to date, both Burlingame and Belmont have taken them up on that opportunity. And tonight, we've asked the folks from Godby Research to make a presentation on the San Carlos-specific results so that you can go through those in detail and also ask questions of the Godby folks. So with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Brian Godby and take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the council and the audience. I'm happy to be here to present the data and the survey. As Mr. Moore alluded to, the purpose was to look at overall awareness and satisfaction with Recology, to look at awareness and satisfaction with the various components of the Kart Smart program, to determine perceptions of the value of collection services, to identify issues and concerns where additional information may be needed by users, and to assess awareness of various additional services, of which San Carlos does make, take advantage of. Again, as Mr. Moore said, this was a telephone survey. We interviewed some 2,450 interviews throughout the member agencies, and that included 210 interviews in San Carlos. We looked for people that were adults, 18-plus, used a variety of different lists and resources to get them, but we did screen out renters and condo owners whose buildings would provide maintenance staff that would be responsible for setting out the carts. So we wanted people who actually were engaged in the process. We were in the field from the middle of April to the beginning of May. The average interview was 16 minutes long. As I said, we did 210 interviews in San Carlos, which gives you an error rate of right around 7%. The first section of the survey that I wanted to address tonight, and there are certainly more details than time permits, is overall satisfaction and awareness. And that starts really with looking at the value of services. This was an initial question where we weren't trying to prompt people, but we said, "Do you get a good value from the services that you pay for?" In San Carlos, 62% said that it was a good value. 20% in round numbers had mixed opinions, and 13% said, "No, it was not a good value." We then looked at Kart Smart awareness and satisfaction when we discussed the overall Kart Smart program and asked people if they were satisfied or dissatisfied, and then drilled down, "Is that very satisfied or somewhat satisfied?" We found that 85% in San Carlos were either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied versus only 7% on the negative side. In this kind of metric, when you only have a single-digit dissatisfaction, as you see here in the very and somewhat combined, that's a very good indication. And 85% is a very strong satisfaction rate. Most of our satisfaction questions were followed with a dissatisfaction, a reason for your dissatisfaction, among just those people who indicated they were dissatisfied. In this case, it's only 15 people, so statistically speaking, it's hard to say that there's a trend here, because it's such a small cell size, which of course is good. We want it to be small, since these are dissatisfied people. But among those 15, the cost of the program was the item that they identified the most. Then the quality of the program. Because these are open-ended responses, we didn't drill down a second time and say, "Well, what do you mean by quality?" We just asked them what they thought. The next area that we addressed was the recycling awareness and satisfaction. And again, when we looked at the satisfaction question, you see here that 92% are either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied. That's an outstanding score. It's hard to get much higher than that. There was only 3% that were dissatisfied. We also asked about the frequency in which people set out their recycling cart and found that 85% set it out weekly, 14% every other week, and then very, very small percentages below that. We asked them the opinion of the frequency of recycling pickup, whether it met their needs or not. And again, 91% said it met their needs, with only 4% saying it's not picked up often enough, and another 4% saying it's picked up too often. Switching gears then to the compost component of it. We then asked, "Are you satisfied with the composting program?" Here, we found 83% were either very or somewhat satisfied, and only 6% were dissatisfied. We had a variety of drill-down questions where we talked about the specific components of the composting cart. And this one that I have here this evening is the food and table scraps component of it. And we asked people why they weren't putting food or table scraps in it, in their compost bin, compost cart, excuse me. And the top response, 36%, was, "It's just too messy." Now, again, these are people that are not doing it, so that's why we have only 46 in the label at the top. 15% didn't know they could. 9% say they don't have a green cart. And they put it in the garbage, is another 9%. Below that, we're below the error rate. We also were interested in the frequency of setting out the cart, again. And the full two-thirds of the respondents said that they put their cart out weekly, another 19% every other week, and then you can see we trail off from there. The opinion and the frequency of their compost cart pickup, 86% said that it met their needs, 2% said not often enough, and 5% said picked up too often. As I mentioned at the outset, there were a variety of additional services that we wanted to get opinions on. And this is a chart that reflects several of those additional services that are provided here in San Carlos. This is not uniform throughout the member agencies, but these are all provided here. And we were asking people if they were aware of them. 82% are aware of the bulky item pickup, a great number. A full two-thirds are aware of the curbside household battery and cellphone recycling. 57% were aware of the curbside motor oil and oil filtering. That's probably an area, because there's, on the other side of the equation, 41%, probably some additional information can be provided there. Compost giveaway, only 38% were aware of that. Clearly, there's an opportunity for public information in that area. And then document shredding, only 20% were aware of that, and a full 79% were not. So again, an opportunity for public information. After we've talked about all these components of the garbage and recycling and composting service, we came back to that value received for the cost of services. And we now found, because we've reminded people all the components of it, that 76% are saying that it's a good value. That's a 14% increase over the 62% that we started with. So that's certainly a very encouraging direction. 11%, 12% in round numbers had mixed opinions, and another 12% said no. But again, those numbers are not as dramatic as the increase on the positive side. In terms of customer service, more specifically with respect to the services provided by Recology, we found that 88% were either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, and only 6% were dissatisfied. We asked people if they had contacted Recology, and then, if so, what, four? Of the 79 people in San Carlos that said they had, 26% said it was for pickup of large items or appliances, and 24% said it was to report a missed or skipped pickup. Beyond that, we have get different-sized carts, report a problem nonspecific, and report a billing problem, and then we drop off into low, single-digit numbers. The next section of the survey dealt with cart-specific issues. The first of those was the timing for putting away their carts after pickup. A full 94% said that it's the same day or immediately, and then 3% said the next day, for 97% total within 24 hours. Always keep them out is less than a percent, and don't know, perhaps because we're talking to the person who doesn't take the garbage in or out and/or isn't aware of the pattern of their significant other. It was 2.5%. Because San Carlos has a household hazardous waste pickup, we asked people if they were aware of it and satisfied, and we found that 87% were satisfied with the door-to-door household hazardous waste program. That concludes the items that I have for presentation this evening. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from council? None? Well, Mr. Collins has one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one. You mentioned the hazardous waste pickup. And how do we notify the agency that we want it, that we have hazardous waste to be removed? Do we call?
I'm going to defer that to somebody from the agency.
Let me just ask that. Could you put that one that you just had on there? Because that's the one before. Because I was going to ask a question, but it was a little different than that. If we can get that one back. Okay, they're very satisfied with the service. I'd like to know how many people know about the service.
Let me flip to that page in the detailed report.
Because that's the bigger problem, obviously, as evidenced right by here.
I believe the number is 33% are aware of it.
33% were aware of it. And of those, of course, they're very satisfied, but two-thirds of the people, two-thirds of the people don't have any idea how to do it.
And the other thing I don't know is, what constitutes hazardous waste other than, say, gasoline or paint? Is it like old paint you don't use?
There's a brochure that they'll be happy to get you tomorrow.
I'm sure I'll have one.
You know, so, I mean, there's a lot of things to it, but--
Right. And let me make some comments, and also I should mention that Monica Devincenzi, who does the outreach for Rethink Waste, is here tonight, and I suspect she may want to comment as well. As I noted in the staff report, one of the interesting things that we saw in many of the results for San Carlos, and for that matter, the other agencies, is that people are very aware of the weekly services and some of the other services, but not so much on the services that occur once or twice a year and the specialized services such as HHW. And I think part of the reason for that is, in the first year of the outreach, the emphasis was on the new services and not so much on the specialized services. And at the SBWMA board level, we've talked about in the next year doing more outreach in those other areas where the knowledge isn't as high. But I'll ask Monica to illuminate on that a bit more.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, one of the purposes of this survey was also see what we need to do better as far as education. And through the results, both for San Carlos and agency-wide, where the HHW program is being offered, there was a lot less people who were aware of it than the other services. So that is definitely an area we're focusing our education on going forward. If you recently read the Rethinker issue that came out over the summer, we highlighted the program again in that, letting residents know about it. And that goes to all single-family and multifamily residents in the service area, as well as, we're going to be doing a lot more targeted outreach on it.
Thank you. Also, I would add, of the 33%, actually, yeah, 33% that were aware, 11% said that they were aware and used the program. 22% were aware but had not used it. So they're conscious of it, but there isn't that big a usage.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
All right, that concludes reports to council. Brings us to item 9A, which is to adopt an ordinance, 1448, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, to include Greenpoint and LEED standards. Mr. Valley?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council, Chris Valley, building official. At the August 27 council meeting, you reviewed an amended San Carlos Green Building Ordinance that, excuse me, formally includes or included the minimum Greenpoint standards and LEED standards for various residential and commercial projects. Since that was presented to council, one of the items that was of concern was whether a Greenpoint raider should be independent. So we just simply included the word "independent" before all the, anything that said "Greenpoint raider" or "LEED verified" and so forth. So otherwise, the ordinance itself was presented to council, and I'm here if you have any further questions related to the ordinance.
Any questions?
It wasn't clear to me if what we have here includes the amended motion, or the condition on the motion that you made, Councilmember Grisilli, about it being a third party. And I didn't, I wanted to confirm.
Yes, that was, that--
That has--
That issue was addressed in the ordinance and in the compliance matrix, I should note as well.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
Okay. I had a question regarding second hearing or second reading to adopt an ordinance. What's the timeframe that we're supposed to have between those? I thought it was 30 days, but I guess not.
The minimum is nine days, excuse me, five-days gap between the reading of the ordinance. And this is a custom ordinance from the city. We're not adopting by reference, and that may be what you're thinking of.
What am I thinking of?
Adopting an ordinance by reference? We're not adopting an ordinance by reference like we do with the Uniform Building Code. But it's effective, and it's effective at 30 days from your adoption tonight.
Oh, okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, I have some speaker cards on this item, and Walter Walker Kellogg and Ray Viati.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Walker Kellogg, Walker, like Texas Ranger. I am a new transplant from San Jose, and I spoke at the last-- I am a new transplant from San Jose, and I spoke at the last meeting on behalf. And I just wanted to applaud your foresight into helping to move San Carlos in the sustainable, in our city's sustainability efforts forward. And I hope you continue to carry that momentum in the direction which you voted last time, and to adopt the ordinance amendments based on Mr. Valli's input. It's forward-thinking like this that encourages me to continue to poach my friends and colleagues from other cities and get them to come live here with us in this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ray Viati.
When you said third-party verification, does that mean if a licensed architect who is LEED certified does a LEED-certified project, he has to get out independent LEED certification? When you say "third-party," that's kind of what that means.
Right? Yes.
So you're telling me, as a licensed architect, I have to hire the architect across the street to certify my work?
Yep. That's what we're saying. So there's no conflict of interest whatsoever?
There's a lot of cost ramifications in that.
I realize that, and Mr. Valli indicated that a lot of the other places around this county don't have it. I, to me, it's just a simple conflict of interest.
Take another look at field verifications. City of Memorial Park has engineers of record do their site visits and do their inspections on-site, unless there's a specific special testing that needs to be done. Geologists of record do field investigation for foundations, deep piers, hand dugs. Those are not third-party verifications. If I were LEED certified, if I were a LEED-certified architect, I'd be spending a lot of time dealing with my LEED certification, dividing the document, coming up the documentation to prove it. And then, so I have to, having spent all that time to set it up, I now have to pay a third-party to do that? That's a huge burden on the client when you look at LEED certification. Take a two-step, take two steps back. Let's look at this on a smaller level. And the fact that, if you look at the building code, it's set up to give homeowners, professionals guidance on how to design what they're building, okay? The residential code and CalGreen were set up so residences and contractors could do their own project without having to hire a professional. You're now requiring that, okay? And when you look at that on a small project, look at something on a small, medium to a small-sized project, something that's going to incur green, let's say it's about $100,000 for construction, you could take $30,000 of that out of that project and put it into other people's pockets, instead of letting that homeowner put it into their property. And that could actually negate the project from being done. I mean, in some cases, when you're looking at smaller projects, you're asking me to hire possibly somebody who is not a licensed professional, doesn't have, and doesn't carry liability insurance to inspect my work. Whereas if something goes wrong, they got to come after me. I just, I really want you guys to rethink this ordinance. We spent a lot of time, at the shareholders' meetings, going back and forth and coming up with what I believe works. You know, letting people make their own decisions, guiding them down the road to make that decision. And this is new. It's evolving. And that's why when, at the last meeting we had, I said, you know, even for the simple projects, make them print out the form and fill it out. It doesn't cost them anything. It makes them aware. It puts options. It's like, hey, I can do this. It doesn't cost me anymore. It's educating the people, it's educating the homeowners so they want to do it, not forcing them to do it. That's the most important thing. It's going to evolve, you're going to have this, you're going to go through this, we're going to get this ordinance passed, and then two years from the 14 code comes out, we've got to do this all again. Let us learn with what we've got now. Don't try and cram it down our throats. That's my most, that's, it's just, let us learn and go forward.
Mr. Viati, I have a question for you, because being that, I know you're an architect. And so if you get, you spoke to the LEED certification.
Right.
Architects carry errors and omissions insurance. Despite the third-party aspect to this, an independent third-party aspect, whose insurance covers the project, even when you hire, have to hire consultants on behalf of the consultant?
Whoever has the ENO. Basically, if, let's say, a building designer designs a residence, it's beyond his capability to make it conform with the code, he has to hire a structural, or an engineer to do the engineering on it. Being that the engineer carries the ENO, the engineer is the one that's going to be liable. They're going to go after the ones with deep pockets.
And if you do a project and make a mistake on that project, whose license is on the line?
Everybody gets covered in, and then it goes to court.
Right. But certainly yours is.
Yeah, primarily mine.
Okay, thank you.
Another little...
I'm sorry, we're at about three minutes on comments, so we have to...
That's it, then.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much. All right. This is an item we've seen before. Do we have more discussion on it?
I'm ready to make a motion. Make a motion that we adopt, pardon me, right, adopt ordinance number 1448. Do I need to read it, Mr. Rubens?
Yes.
Ordinance number 1448, amending ordinance 1422, 2010 California Green Building Standards Code, CalGreen, Part 11, with mandatory energy efficiency provisions and amendments and modifications, and adding Section 15.04.125 as San Carlos Green Building Ordinance.
Well, if I could, I mean, the gentleman brought up a good point, and I'm just wondering, maybe we could ask Mr. Valli, is this a common...
No, it isn't. He said it was the last time.
Yeah, I don't remember. I'm sorry. I guess the question is, are we unique in this?
We're somewhat unique right now, yes. It's not really definitively, for lack of a better phrase, addressed in various cities' green building ordinances. Contractors can verify, inspectors can verify, architects can verify, green raiders can verify. It's across the board. We appear to be right now the, one of the, or maybe the only ordinance that says, no, it shall be a third-party. And yes, that can be quite costly when we are talking about commercial projects, because now we're reeling in a whole different person versus the LEED-certified architect, or whomever, that designed the project and so forth, and is already on board with the team to begin with. So that's kind of just a industry standard, so to speak.
No, someone in the audience wanted to make a public comment, so we're going to have a public comment. But go ahead. I didn't mean to...
Well, that's too much, yes, we're being quite unique in, you know, with this language, so to speak, in our ordinance.
Let me ask a frank question. Is it overkill?
Speaking quite frankly, yes, it is.
I'm sorry, begs the question, why are we doing this?
Is this the right thing to do? It's the direction that I was, that staff was given, but I just provided an opinion. I probably, I won't look at my resume, but I did.
I appreciate your honesty. That's why I asked.
I have a question, the city attorney. If this doesn't pass, then I do have a problem. Well, I can see where this is going, and this is going to be, because you voted against it last time. And I'm going to vote against it if it doesn't have it in it, so go ahead.
But procedurally, what will happen is, you will not have adopted this version of the ordinance. You could entertain another motion to reintroduce a different version of the ordinance, and then come back at a future meeting to adopt that revised version of the ordinance. That's how you would do it.
And we can't do it next time, because we'll only have four of us next time, probably too. So, okay. I just asked, I just didn't know what the...
Did you mean in terms of our compliance to state code regarding...
I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to get ourselves in a jackpot if we didn't pass this or something. That's all.
Oh, with the ordinance itself?
Yeah, the ordinance itself.
But not, just to be clear, if we didn't even address this ordinance, where we sit right now on our green building code, we're perfectly fine with the state?
I understand. I just wanted to make sure there was no, because I can see, that's why you have five and not four on the dais.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
You think this may be a trend? You think more cities may...
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? When you're saying "this," are you speaking of the entire ordinance, or of the third-party verification?
Just this particular feature of it, this third-party verification.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, so I can follow your question.
I mean, that has been brought up as an issue, and I think we need to talk about it, I think we need to address it. And my question then is after these other, my other question is, do you think that this is potentially a trend in other cities?
My conversation with my colleagues, the topic hasn't been brought up with regard to their green building ordinances.
Okay.
If I may jump in there, what Mr. Viati said about the, when the code was written, and it was written in such a way, you know, when this was wrestled with at the state level, they did try to make it inclusive, so that, you know, a contractor could do this, a building designer or an architect could do it, or even a homeowner could accomplish this on their own without hiring a professional to do it. So it seemed that some of that, the intent, perhaps, I didn't go to any of those hearings, but was, as Mr. Viati talked about, let's make people aware of what's out there and what's available to them to improve, you know, not only homeowners, but, you know, just building owners across the board, to be able to bring down energy costs, recycle materials, so forth, make them aware of what's out there in the market. And what's happened in response to that, I can tell you from my experience being in the field, is especially on the commercial end, the producers of product have raced ahead of a lot of this to sell their product with the green label, with the LEEDs, points certified labels and so forth. Hasn't happened quite as quickly in the residential field, but, you know, look through any trade magazine, get a copy of Fine Home Building or any of those magazines, and you will see that all these companies that, from, you know, GE making washers to, you know, Delco making furnaces, they realize that the consumer is becoming more aware of these issues, and so they're making it a feature and benefit of their product. I can see the day coming very quickly where all of the things that we're doing at the legislative level will be virtually unnecessary, because it'll be taken care of by the marketplace.
To the chair, could I ask the city attorney another question? Assuming that we vote on this, and let's assume that people want to eliminate that word, we're starting over again anyway, aren't we?
You would need to reintroduce the ordinance with that word, those words removed.
And again, I'm in the unenviable position of voting against something that I believe in. I'm not, you know, for the entire ordinance, so, you know, that's the difficult part. But whatever the rest of the council wants to do, you know, it's fine with me.
Well, let me just finish with expressing my, part of its confusion, but my problem with it is that a lot of the green building codes that we've put in place, I'm completely in support of. But I also acknowledge that they add a cost to building, and they have, and there have been quite a bit of cost. I think they're necessary. I'm in complete support of the ordinance. It's just that this one little piece to me just seems redundant or unnecessary, and maybe I need to be convinced that it isn't.
I convinced you better at the last meeting, because you voted for it, but...
You're right. You did. And then I thought about it some more.
I'm not doing a good job tonight, so...
No, I thought about it some more. I thought...
That's fine.
Are we the pioneer, or are we the renegade? I'm not quite sure.
That's why there's two readings to ordinances, because just for that reason, that people change their mind. So it's nothing unusual. It's not the first time it's ever happened. So if the rest of the council wants to put it, take it out again, I'm not going to sit here and walk off the dais or anything. Whatever you guys want to do is fine. You know, it's fine. Fine with me.
Can I ask a procedural question? Since I've had second thoughts about this, is it possible to withdraw my second of the motion?
You don't need to do that.
Or do I do not? Do we just vote on it, and then we...
She can withdraw your second.
Yeah, we could vote on it, and then if, that's one way to clear the dais of the issue, is to vote on it. But that doesn't mean we're, we would necessarily be done, especially under our new procedures, if you will, of coming quicker to a motion in a second. You can, like I said, clear the dais of the issue by voting on it, and then someone could say, you know, "Mr. Mayor, I would like to make another motion," and make a motion for how you would like to see it. If it gets a second, then we could discuss that motion and vote on it. The other way to handle it is to put a competing motion on the dais. And when you put a competing motion on the dais, the competing motion gets taken up, discussed, and voted on first. And then if that passes and it overrides the first motion, you don't even deal with the first motion. If it loses, then you go back to the motion that was there before and deal with it. That's the procedure.
And as I understand it, Mr. Rubens, even if you make a second, you can still vote against the motion, correct?
Oh, yes. That's right. You're just, all you're saying...
You're not committing yourself.
That's a good point. When you second something, you simply, you're simply saying, I think this item is worthy of discussion. Doesn't mean you're voting for it, or you support it even.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Little civics lesson.
There you go.
Good to know.
Very good. So what's the pleasure? Do we want to vote on this, or competing motion, or...
Well, I suppose I could put up, I'm sorry?
Your questions are answered?
My questions have been answered, yes.
Now, I have a question before we then get to that. Sorry, we are jumping back and forth a little bit between discussion and questions, but so if we take out the independent part of it, I'm still, for myself, I'm still looking at this Greenpoint procedure, and I've looked at what some of the, the way things are in some other cities, and it seems that with those, you're given a form, and you fill it out, and you turn it in with your application for a building permit, just like you turn in everything else, your plans and so forth. But it's just a matter of going through a form and checking it off, and incorporating things into your project as need be, like, you know, low-flush toilets and so forth. But it doesn't go beyond, it doesn't really require additional cost to the owner. It's, like I say, it's mostly just a checkoff list. Is that where we would end up, or not?
Well, we're formally including, let's just talk residential for sake of argument. We're formally including Greenpoint standards with the ordinance, and the only real difference that we're talking about this evening is the removal of "independent" from the verification definition, so to speak. So we're still requiring a Greenpoint raider to be involved with this ordinance. It's just that we've removed the word "independent."
Actually, we added it.
Well, I'm sorry, you, yes, you had added it, but the discussion tonight appears to be something different, so I'm just, you know, throwing that in. So the only difference that I'm hearing you mentioned tonight is that we're removing the word "independent," but we're still utilizing the use or services, so to speak, of a Greenpoint raider certified through Build It Green and so forth for projects that require that on the compliance matrix.
And just to be clear also, the city does not have the staff to verify any of this, so even with the Greenpoint system, during the construction process, there's some aspects of that that have to be verified, and so you need that consultant to come back out and do that verification.
Right. My understanding is, yes, there are in-progress site visits from the raider, so to speak.
Okay.
And that's for reconstruction or construction? But for an addition, there is no verification required?
Well, here's the thing. The way this reads, if I understand this correctly, an addition of 500 square feet or greater requires Greenpoint 50 points, where...
Without any verification.
And I was even wondering over the weekend, as I read this, I had read it a couple times, the, well, yeah, without verification. So you have to go through the scoring and turn in the paper... So you have to go through the scoring and turn in the paperwork.
They do it, they can do it themselves, without having been trained?
That's right. But once you get to what's considered by this definition here of a major remodel, so if over 50% of your foundation is being replaced or added to, is that the way I look at that? Or even repaired in some cases, if you're dealing with more than 50% of the foundation either existing or adding to, and then there's other things, like if you're turning off the P G N E and the water, and you can't live in the structure anymore during the construction, now it's considered a major remodel. It's the same, as I read it, it looks like the same standard that Mr. Valley uses in the building department for triggering sprinkler systems.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, this is actually a, basically a kind of adopted definition.
Right. So that's what we're calling a major reconstruction. You can't even put remodel on your title block anymore, it has to be reconstruction if it says anything. So, when you get to that point, then you've got to do the verification process. And what could happen is, you can have projects where you're adding 500 square feet, but you're still tearing out all the interior walls and moving things around and doing enough changes to the structure that you may trigger what's called a major reconstruction. Because if you've made it so that you can't live in it anymore, and the bathrooms are gone, and the power's been shut off, my understanding is that even a project like that, that's just 500 square feet added on, that's still a major reconstruction. Or if you look at smaller homes, and we have a lot of them in San Carlos that are even right now with the garages, you go to the east side, those homes are about 1,100 square feet, including the garage. So it's not too hard when you're adding 500 square feet to look at a project like that and say, "Guess what? This is a major reconstruction, and you've triggered all this stuff." So. One more item I wanted to be.
I'm not sure I'm clear on what you're getting to. Are you saying that you have a problem with something that's included in the ordinance, or you're just?
I was just clarifying, what's the trigger point?
Okay, right.
And I wanted to clarify one other thing that was talked about last time, in terms of burden on the, in this case, on the homeowner. It was said, "Well, this is only, you know, if it costs, say, $5,000 on a $500,000 project, that's a small percentage of the total project cost." And that may be true, but, in fact, I was asking some contractors about this, because I've never, even though I'm in the business and I do drawings for this, I've never actually done a project for myself, you know, by myself. What happens is, you, when you're going to do a project like this, and if you're going to get a construction loan, which most homeowners do, they'll take equity out of their home or whatever, to do the project, that construction loan covers construction cost. So it'll pay for the permit fee, and it'll cover things like your permit fee and everything from then on, buying the plywood, the concrete, the labors and everything else. But up until the point the drawings are turned in and being reviewed by the building department, those are hard costs that the homeowner pays out of their pocket, or any money they may have saved up. And so, and those costs generally run, you know, between, on a smaller project, say, about $10,000 to maybe $50,000. So, in that sense, it's a different percentage, and that's what I was talking about before. When you sit down at the kitchen table with somebody who's considering a remodel to their home, that first hurdle they have to get over is, "What's it going to cost me to design this, get the drawings done, and get everything over to the building department where I'm actually asking for a permit?" And that's why when you add on, you know, $3,000, $4,000 here and $3,000, $4,000 there, it really starts adding up, and it gives people pause for what they're planning on doing. And not so much if it's a really huge remodel, not so much, because those kind of people probably have the money anyways tucked away somewhere. But when you're dealing with a, you know, young couple, and they just had a baby, and they want to expand their house, and, you know, both are working for a startup, they look at things like this, and they, you know, so it means something.
So can we see where we stand with the current motion that's?
So we have a motion on the table?
Identify what the next action is?
Yeah.
Depending on how the vote goes, we can absorb all the information.
You all want to vote on what we have on the table right now?
Just to be clear, this motion includes the independent verification.
Right.
It's what was introduced at the previous meeting.
Okay. So, roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
No.
Councilmember Collins? Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert is absent. Mayor Grokot?
No. Okay. So, we can leave it at that, or we can take something else up?
I would like to move that we reintroduce the ordinance as it was presented at the previous meeting, with not including the independent verification.
Through the chair, can we reintroduce the motion tonight?
Yes, she can.
Okay, good, because that means we cut at least one meeting out of this. Okay, good, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to say that, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm going to vote for it because I believe in the full ordinance. So even though I disagree with my colleagues, but I'm going to vote for it because I think it's the appropriate thing. Because if I don't, you probably won't get that, you won't get three votes there either, so it'll be forever, it'll keep bouncing around. So, that's all I had to say.
Well, I'm still going to vote against it because.
That's my point. No, if I vote against, that's not my point, Mr. Mayor. If I vote against it, we're going to keep this wheel going, and then we have to reintroduce it the next time. We have five people, and we're not going to have that for another month or two. So I'd like to end.
But I want to add a comment, because I understand why you're voting for it, and you said you strongly believe in this, you know, what's being done. I don't want to give the idea that I don't.
I understand.
You know, I talk to homeowners all the time, and, you know, tell them about product, and explain to them that they can get savings here, and if they're interested in green, if they, you know, I've designed houses where, and now I've just learned to ask people ahead in the design process, "Are you going to be looking at putting solar panels on?" Because I've had a number of projects ruined by people putting on solar panels after the fact that, you know, I thought, I look at it and go, "You know, that's too bad. I could have designed that in, and we wouldn't have to have them running up over the ridge and beyond the ridge and looking unsightly." So, it's not that I don't like this kind of stuff, it's I don't, I really believe in the free-market way of doing this, and.
I'm not to imply that you didn't, I'm just saying.
Okay, well, no, I just wanted to clarify, sure.
And we'll keep bouncing this sucker around for another few months.
So, any other discussion on the item?
No, I just wanted to state that I really felt that the intent in changing what we currently have to this new green building ordinance was to offer more flexibility to the applicants, as well as the professionals that they're working with, rather than working with our existing green ordinance. And my feeling is that by not requiring that independent verification, it is additional flexibility. It's not dictating how that needs to be done, and so that's my reason for supporting the original, what was introduced, what was presented by staff at the previous meeting.
Very good. Mr. Collins, you want to say anything, or?
No more comments.
No more comments, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Just point of order, we don't have to reread it to reintroduce it. Excuse me, I apologize, but.
I think it's that adoption.
I'm sorry?
I think it's an adoption that you.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Because you waived the reading of the ordinance.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, I vote yes.
Councilmember Olbert is absent. Mayor Grokot?
No.
Okay, so we'll see this next time.
Okay. So we'll see this at our next scheduled meeting, again, two weeks from now.
We've just approved the second reading, not the actual.
That's right, we've approved the second reading, not the ordinance itself. So we introduced it again, another one, okay. Ms. Mendenhall comes forward for item 10B.
10A?
10A, excuse me, I'm sorry, lost my place there. 10A. And that is consideration of adoption of the City of San Carlos strategic plan, because we were at a retreat for a good part of the day on August 30th, was it?
That's correct.
Till about, we're actually getting real good at this, we were out of there at 1:30?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, 1:30, and she thought we'd be there till 2:30. So, the fact that Bob didn't have anything to say that day probably helped, but, no.
Throw it to me, that's it, throw it to me.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of the adoption of the strategic plan. On Thursday, August 30th, those council and staff met for the 14th time in a day-long facilitated, or half-day-long facilitated strategic planning session. The purpose of this was to review and discuss the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, review the city's vision statement, review the city's mission statement, review the three-year strategic goals, and create new six-month objectives. The city's vision statement was reviewed but remained unchanged, and is shown here. By 2017, the City of San Carlos will be a vibrant, family- and business-friendly community, admired as a great place to live, learn, work, and play. The city's mission statement was reviewed but remained unchanged. The City of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community. The city's core values were reviewed and also remain unchanged and are reflected here, including fiscal responsibility, environmental protection, strategic thinking, high ethical standards, community involvement, high-quality customer service, strong sense of community, and public safety. The city's three-year goals were also reviewed and discussed, and as a result, there were two small changes made. The goal of maintain and enhance facilities and infrastructure was revised to plan for and implement facility and infrastructure sustainability. And the goal of plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability was revised to plan for and implement financial sustainability.
I think you misread that, but we know what you mean.
Did I read it?
Yeah, you were talking about the infrastructure?
Yes.
On that last one?
Infrastructure, plan for and implement facility and infrastructure sustainability.
Right.
Yes.
Didn't come out that way the first time.
Once the goals are reviewed and amended, the council and staff work together to create six-month objectives. The strategic plan includes 35 new objectives. For the three-year goal of provide effective and sustainable public safety, by December 15th, the police chief will implement an enforcement plan to reduce illegal soliciting and canvassing by 80%. By December 31st, the fire chief will increase the involvement in CERT by 10%. By December 31st, the fire chief and city manager will recommend to council actions to expand the fire services agreement with Redwood City. By December 31st, the fire chief will ensure inspections for 10% of multifamily residential and commercial properties. By February 1st, the fire and police chiefs will report to council on the value of collaborating the CERT and neighborhood watch groups. Under the goal of plan for and implement facility and infrastructure sustainability, by November 1st, the public works director will present for action a consultant to design Crestview Park. By November 1st, the public works and community development directors will present the streets policy for consideration. By November 30th, the assistant city manager will present for action a comment letter on the study of Caltrion and the high-speed rail. By December 15th, the public works director will present for consideration a consultant for the storm drain master plan. By February 15th, the public works director, working with Belmont, Redwood City, and San Mateo County, will explore options for addressing watershed and flooding problems. By February 15th, the public works director and the administrative services director will present to council results and recommendations from a sewer rate study. By February 15th, the parks and recreation director will present for action options for a recreation facilities usage plan. By February 15th, the public works director will present an update of the pavement management plan. By February 15th, the public works director will present a sewer master plan. By February 15th, the fire chief and the city manager will present to council information on possible fire station mergers. At a future date, the public works director will present a study session regarding pros and cons of connecting Crestview to Highway 28. For the goal of enhancing economic development, by October 15th, the community development director will present to the successor agency a plan to address vacant successor agency-owned storefronts. By October 31st, the community development director will develop a business outreach and retention program. By January 15th, the community development director, working with the chamber, will develop a plan for a business showcase event. By February 15th, the community development director will begin implementation of the business outreach and retention program, and meet with five existing businesses. By February 15th, the community development director will bring the Wheeler Plaza E I R to council for action. By February 15th, the community development director will present to council a plan to use the strategic property acquisition reserve. And at a future date, the community development director will present a development and disposition agreement for Wheeler Plaza. Under the goal of plan for and implement financial sustainability, by December 15th, the administrative services director will recommend a vendor to prepare an updated cost allocation and user fee study. By January 15th, the administrative services director will implement budget software for reporting on the new two-year budget. By January 15th, the city attorney will present for action the lease of the Branston billboard. By February 15th, the administrative services director will report to the council on the city's unfunded liabilities. Under the goal of promote and achieve environmental sustainability, by October 1st, the assistant city manager and parks and recreation director will implement compost recycling at city facilities. By October 15th, the assistant city manager will update the city's government greenhouse gas inventory. By October 31st, the assistant city manager will complete outreach regarding the single-use plastic bag ban. By January 15th, the assistant city manager will present for consideration the county's single-use bag ban ordinance. By February 15th, the public works director will report on pollution problems in San Carlos. At a future date, the assistant city manager will update the community-wide greenhouse gas inventory. At a future date, the public works director will present a report on a city-owned public utility. And finally, at a future date, the parks and recreation director will present a feasibility study and options to reduce energy usage at city facilities. So this completes the review of the objectives. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No.
I just have a few, they're not necessarily for Ms. Mendenhall, but one of the things that was talked about during the retreat was that the, there were a couple of items that were brought up that didn't get through as, get into the matrix, if you will. And those were brought up during the retreat, we said, you know, there's some, especially when we're looking at the current internal weaknesses and challenges. And the comment was that staff reviews those and looks at those at their staff meeting. And so my question with the city manager, has anything come out of that that's not showing up on the matrix necessarily, but is showing up on the radar screen as, "Yeah, we need to take care of this"?
The staff meeting where we'll be reviewing that is actually tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. So, is there a way we can have a discussion item on that for, maybe under reports to council? If there's anything that comes up?
Sure, if there's anything, I'll put it on the agenda if there's anything I feel significant, yeah.
Very good, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? None, okay. Do we need to, we need to move to adopt this, right, so?
I move that we adopt the strategic plan. Resolution number 2012-dash?
56.
56.
I'll second it.
Just an item, another item for discussion before we take the vote, if it's all right. We discussed, Mr. Malpe and I discussed after the retreat about whether the council wanted to continue participation in the retreat or not, and if we wanted to continue to have our own separate retreat. Mr. Malpe, can you remind me how we're going to deal with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing that item up. Where we stand right now, the direction from the city council.
Where we stand right now, the direction from the city council was that this would be the last retreat that they would participate in, and they would like to see it continue as a staff process, where the deliverable, which you're seeing tonight, would continue to come back for council approval and discussion in the future, but the council wouldn't participate in that process and would instead hold their own retreat with city attorney and city manager in advance of that session. That's the direction that we have to date. My thought after the retreat we just had was, in October, when we have a full council again, so the first meeting in October, I will bring, I'll put an item on the agenda to discuss scheduling that next council-manager, city attorney retreat. And if the council should choose instead to want to abandon that process and continue on with the strategic planning process, then we would simply have the strategic, the next strategic plan, which I think we've already calendared for February 26th. So we'll have a chance, the council will have a chance in October when its five members are together to discuss how they want to proceed with the retreat.
Sounds great to me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Very good. So I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item 10B, which is a recommendation that the council introduce the attached ordinance amendment amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 2.08. Mr. Rubens is here, so this has to do with how we deal with elections and replacement of abandoned seats and so forth. Correct?
Yeah, this is a cleanup ordinance to bring our municipal code in compliance with state law in a couple of respects. One is, when we have a council vacancy, the existing ordinance has a 30-day timeline for the council to take action, both to call a special election and to fill the vacancy. Actually, state law was changed since the ordinance was last updated to make that timeline of 60 days, both to fill a vacancy and to call a special election and to decide whether to fill the vacancy. The other change is, just something while I was reviewing 2.08, I noticed that our ordinance did not have the place for our regular meetings, and state law states that you have to put that, if you're going to do it by ordinance, that you need to put the place as well as the time of the meeting. So I added the two places where the city council has held regular meetings, that the second and fourth Mondays of every month meetings, here at City Hall Council Chambers and at the library. That's the places where you've held special meetings in the past. Just an idea to bring our ordinance in compliance and address the reality of how in San Carlos we, and where we hold regular meetings. I also have added a provision that would allow you, by resolution, to set other places where you would hold a regular meeting. As in the past, we've had special, they're not really special meetings, they were held on the regular meeting night, but they were at different locations in the city. As I mentioned in the staff report, at the Hillary Aviation Museum and at the youth center, we've actually held meetings on our regular meetings nights. If you have such a resolution, I would bring it to you before that meeting, before an anticipated meeting at a different location, or we would just, as a general cleanup, we'd identify the other locations in the city where we might hold a regular meeting, in case that was ever required, we needed a larger venue, is how we've handled that. So those are the basic two cleanup items that this ordinance amendment is intended to address.
Questions?
No.
I just have one. If this ordinance had been in place back in May, would that have negated the necessity to have that special meeting, that Friday meeting that I called in from Florida?
No, I was, no, it wouldn't have necessarily, it would have avoided some confusion, because our ordinance said 30 days to take action, and we, I found out during that process that we actually had 60 days. So we were defaulting to state law, but I'm intending, looking ahead, long-term, in our municipal code, I just want to make sure it complies so future councils and staff don't have any confusion about your deadline. Because the 30-day deadline was a very short timeframe.
Right.
And initially, we were operating under the assumption that action had to be taken in that, in that short timeframe.
So I just have a single question, and that is, this deals with regularly scheduled council meetings. Do we need to say anything in the ordinance about special meetings? Because we often have, you know, we've come to the conclusion recently to call our closed-session meetings "special meetings of the council," and we go through, before those, we have the whole routine, just like we do here in this chamber, of opening the meeting and then having public comment, and then we close the doors so we can have closed session. We call those "special meetings." Do we have to have anything in our ordinance that reflects that from time to time we have special meetings and they happen at very start times?
We don't. The state law is pretty clear about special meetings. Special meetings can happen on 24-hour notice, so they're different meetings. The state law does not require special meetings to be codified or enacted by resolution as to when or where you're going to have those meetings. And the idea, a special meeting also can take place literally anywhere within San Carlos, so there's no restriction on the place, it just has to be within San Carlos. There's some other exceptions if we happen to own property outside of the city, or if you had a city attorney whose office was outside San Carlos, you could meet with your league of counsel outside of the city, but very few exceptions.
And is the term "special meeting" synonymous with "closed session," or not?
No, no. We, the way we notice our special meeting for that meeting that falls on the same day as our regular meeting, we do a 72-hour notice for that meeting unless something urgent comes up in the meantime. So we don't really have, the reason we're doing it that way is because our regular meeting time is 7:00 PM, so if we want to have the meeting, hold a closed session before our regular meeting, we have to call it a special meeting.
Okay. Does the state law, I haven't read it, this particular law, does it set up guardrails for why you can have a special meeting?
No, there isn't. The, only certain actions can take place at a special meeting.
Okay.
For instance, you can't adopt an ordinance at a special meeting.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you. That's the questions. Do we have a motion on this item?
Make a motion to introduce the, do we need to read the ordinance? Pardon me? To introduce the municipal code amendment to ordinance number?
1449.
1449, ordinance of the city council, the city of San Carlos, amending Chapter 2.08 of Municipal Code regarding City Council Vacancies and Regular Meeting Place.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the item?
No.
None? Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right, I think that brings us to our last item, other than the items that were polled from the consent calendar. We have item 10C, which is an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.56, flood damage prevention, and there are some various sections here. There we go, the sections you can see up on the screen.
All right, good evening.
Mr. Valley, again.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council, Chris Valley, building official. This evening, you have amended language to consider for the city's flood prevention ordinance. The revised language is required by FEMA and has been pre-reviewed by FEMA as well, and is, and could be looked at somewhat as housekeeping to address the new flood insurance rate map, otherwise known as FIRM, that will become effective October 16th of this year. The new flood insurance rate map is reflective of the remapping that occurred as a result of the Caltrain grade separation between El Camino and Old County Road. Brief little history, to be covered by a flood insurance policy, a property must be in a community that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, otherwise known as NFIP. Those are two acronyms for you this evening. To qualify for the program, a community adopts and enforces a flood prevention ordinance to regulate development in flood hazard areas. The basic premise of the program is to ensure that new development will not aggravate existing flood conditions, and that new buildings will be protected from flood damage. Cities that take part in the National Flood Insurance Program remain eligible for federal assistance in the event of flood-related incidents that may occur. I'm just going to leave that up there, because those are the three sections that are, where the language is proposed to be changed. I'm just speaking somewhat layman terms here. The key amendments to the ordinance are to formally recognize Paragraph 60.3C of the NFIP, of the National Flood Insurance Program Regulations, that address new development in severe flood hazard areas. And that language is revised or added under item I of Section 15.56.030. Second item is to add language to recognize not only the 1977 flood insurance study and maps, but all subsequent amendments and future maps that may be adopted further down the road. With the revised language, we'll no longer have to bring forth the ordinance for readoption when new maps are drawn, and that language is added under 15.56.070. And lastly, FEMA requested language be changed to address variances that may be granted by the floodplain administrator, the building official, and I have yet to consider a variance, but as part of that, as part of the city's participation, regardless, language was revised under Section 15.56.200F. As I mentioned earlier, we had some, part of why this is brought forward is because of the remapping that's occurred and so forth, and just general maintenance of the ordinance. But one of the significant results of the remapping was the removal of over 200 properties from Zone A severe hazard flood area. And you can see that it's slightly north of Arroyo encompassing El Camino, the, and Laurel Street properties, and then here's kind of a southern portion of that D-shaped area going on down to Howard Avenue and still along El Camino and Laurel. And then here's a overview of the entire area of the 200-plus properties that were removed from the severe flood hazard area. That required notification on my part to let the property owners know and so forth. And that's all part of just maintenance of the ordinance and what we're required to Notification percent, as a result of our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, we became eligible to participate in the community rating system, otherwise known as CRS. CRS reduces flood insurance premiums to reflect what a community does above and beyond the National Flood Insurance Program's minimum standards for floodplain regulation. The objective of the community rating system is to reward communities for what they are doing, as well as provide incentive for new flood protection activities. Reduction in flood insurance premium rates is provided according to a community's CRS classification, and then it's represented in this chart. We were at a 10, and with our, it's, look at it as kind of baby steps, but the recent application resulted in us being classified as a CR class nine. So, property owners that have flood insurance can expect to see in the ballpark a 5% premium discount on their insurance rates. So it's a voluntary program that we, as the floodplain administrator, enacted, and it's something that requires annual maintenance and so forth to keep it going, and when we really get our act together, we'll be up toward a 1, hopefully, but that'll take some time.
Okay, very good.
Any questions? I can-
Any questions?
No.
No? No, I have a few. Not so fast. Sorry, Mr. Grisilli.
No, I just don't know what, how you could, I don't know, since it's a cleanup thing, I can't figure out, but be my guest.
All right.
You're the mayor.
Can you go over quickly what changed to cause this map to change in these parts?
It was the, one of the key components of the remapping was something that occurred 15, over 15 years ago, and that was the grade separation. It created a lot of outlets for water to flow. I'm speaking in layman terms here.
Right.
I don't have the exact, you know, water flow terminology and so forth, but that's it in a nutshell, really.
Okay. And perhaps the point that I want to drive at with a question really doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance, I'm not sure, and so that's why I'm going to go ahead and ask it, is, it's obvious this is good for insurance customers relative to their rates. However, when I look at this map and I consider our history, I don't want to cause any trouble for anybody here by saying this publicly and, you know, on film, but I'm sure all of us can look at this map and remember not too long ago having some major flooding issues right where this map includes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I can remember driving through the downtown area after a major storm, and for instance, where Nielsen's garage is, the whole area was underwater. It was, you know, it was a problem for the, for the commercial property owners especially. And even further down on El Camino, we had some problems. So, my question is this, does this ordinance address anything relative to what we can or cannot tell a property owner, they, if they're going to build a new building, and I know this came up with 1001 El Camino, where they didn't want to raise that building up too much, if at all, and yet, I think there was recommendations coming from city staff, no, no, you need to get it up a little bit because-
You're referring to 1001 Laurel.
I'm sorry, 1001 Laurel, yeah.
And that, that project was built to, and also was one that was removed from that area, but it was built to the minimum requirements as required by the ordinance.
So can we go beyond the ordinance, I guess is my question?
Sure, yeah.
We could say-
The ordinance represents the bare minimum.
Right.
And sometimes the bare minimum is just the bare minimum, you know, it's-
Well, do we, so would we address that tonight with this ordinance, or should that be something that's looked at in another study and we say, you know, so that we can say to property owners, you know, for your own good and for our good as well, we're going to set the bar here, because we know we've had, on occasion, issues with flooding in these areas, and we want these first-floor levels up to a certain height so that we don't have issues.
Well, my response to that would be-
And the city attorney may jump in here, too.
-somewhat exhaustive approach toward remapping at the federal level, and I, I'm-
The issue is adjusting the, some of the technical details about elevations. I don't know if we'd have to go back to, the flood map is the flood map, and that's what the federal government requires, the 100-year flood events, the 10-year flood events. But if you wanted to exceed the minimum standards, I would recommend you come back and look at it, because there's a lot of consequences that might come from changing the minimum plate height of buildings and new construction in the flood zone or the areas that are not designated in the flood zone, but you want to apply more stringent standards to. And I think there's an issue of notice to a change to those, to those plate heights and the standards, because there is some property issues that would be involved, I think, with changing a plate height. Even a one-foot difference can be significant.
Yeah, I know, yeah, right, right.
So I would say we'd want to study that, and, and I'm familiar with the incident you were talking about, and I'm not exactly sure of the cause of that, but I think it had something to do with a, at Elm Street, where the creek overtopped at the Elm Street Bridge, and that water was just simply flowing from that location, rather than a generalized flooding that this map deals with, because, just to get into some detail that's perhaps not city attorney stuff, but the reason the map had to be changed from the grade separation is the old railroad grade, before the Howard and Britton Avenue, especially Britton Avenue went through, acted as a dam and kept the water on the west side. So now with the elevation change, some of the water now, at the, at the height that it used to reach that was dammed by the railroad, would, now will flow through Britton and flow through Howard, basically down those streets. There's some impact on the east side, but it's really, it's a relief on the west side. And 1001 Laurel, the plate height that- and 1001 Laurel, the plate height that we imposed on them anticipated this flood map, the new height that would occur from, from the change in the grade separation, or changes caused by the grade separation.
Okay.
I'd like to add also, the area of San Carlos has had only two repetitive loss claims compared to other cities, which are much higher. Ironically, one of those claims was not even in a flood zone area.
Right.
So we have pretty low numbers on claims that are filed with insurance companies.
All right. I think I've got my questions answered. Very good. Do we have a motion?
I move that we introduce ordinance, I didn't see a page that list, that actually listed, said ordinance at the top of it, so, but ordinance number-
1450.
1450, amending chapter 15.6 flood damage prevention, sections 15.56.030, and 15.56.070, and 15.56.200.
I'll second. All right, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Do we have any discussion on the item? None? Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right, the only other item we have then is from the consent calendar.
Two items.
Yeah, I believe it was 7F, and Ms. Clapper, you had an item as well?
7J.
Okay, let's take yours first on a deference, and then I'll take mine last.
Okay. On, the reason I pulled this out was with the change that was made to the, the materials, the updated Second Amendment that changed the, the chart. I wanted to see if, if council thought it would be a good idea to actually have two actions, one being to adopt this, the resolution, but similar to what Redwood City is doing this evening in their city council meeting, to also have a second item, which would authorize the city managers to discuss, authorize the city managers to negotiate administrative expenses, which is, if we look at, you have the original chart in attachment one.
Page is that?
Through the city attorney, could I ask a question? Can we, is that on the agenda? Can we do that, anything like that? I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'd just like to know if we can even do it.
Looking at the agenda, it's adopt a resolution approving Second Amendment to the fire contract. I think, first of all, I think this is one of those areas where you've, the council's already granted authority to the city manager to, in an ongoing manner, to review this fire services agreement and any of the provisions there. But secondly, the, the, within the agreement, the way it's agendized, has that authority to have the city manager continue negotiations and, on the details of the rates, so-
It's already in there.
Short answer is, I think you can do it tonight, it's within this item.
Do two, or it's already in there?
Two, it's, well, it's, I think you could do it either way, but if the, if it's the council's pleasure to do it as two motions, you could do it.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we're clear.
I just wanted to bring it up for discussions, I'm not saying that there needs to be two pieces, but we did change and remove the language in the original attachment that did authorize the, the city managers to negotiate. It was updated, and then knowing that the Redwood City Council is looking at the same item tonight, and they had two separate items, I just wanted to, to bring that issue to our attention and let us make that decision, rather than after the fact, saying, wait, someone might have a concern about it.
Through the mayor, if I may, just add that with my understanding that Redwood City's got their, that they'll be taking two actions, I would appreciate if the council could take the second motion as well, just for a point of clarification when I meet with their city manager.
Okay.
Just for consistency?
Okay. All right. So then can we have a motion?
Then the first motion would be to adopt the resolution approving the Second Amendment to the contract for fire services with the, with Redwood City, is there, oh, I guess we need a resolution number 20-
55.
12-55, okay. Approving the Second Amendment to the contract for fire services with the city of Redwood City.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
No.
None? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. And you wanted to make a second motion?
So then the second motion would be, I don't have the exact wording from Redwood City, but it was, the, a motion would be to authorize the city manager to negotiate administrative expenses with Redwood City regarding the Second Amendment to the contract for fire services with the city of Redwood City. Oh, do, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, stand up, and your deputy fire chief. The language actually reads, quote, "By motion, authorize the city manager to negotiate for payment of any additional administrative costs associated with the Second Amendment."
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. All right, thank you, Ms. Clapper, for pulling that item and making that clarification. The item that I pulled was 7F, which simply has to do with the minutes, and I, not looking to correct anything, but I just had a question for the city manager regarding an item that's in the minutes, to see if we are addressing it at any, in any fashion. And that has to do with, that particular evening, under item nine, under the public hearing, we had quite a few folks here who were hotel and motel owners, and they were concerned about our sewer rates and how we formulate them and how they're, they are applied to their businesses. And I'm wondering, it doesn't say anything in here about any follow-up, and I thought there was some discussion about follow-up with those businesses for, for the future.
I think the discussion that we've had is that the council has already taken action in terms of authorizing a sewer rate study, and in fact, they had already done that at the time they adopted the rates. We've communicated that to this group, and certainly would want them to be involved in that process as it relates to their component of the rates. I know the council received email from one of the gentlemen involved earlier today, as a matter of fact. I responded on behalf of the city, reminding him that we do have a study that, that I don't think the work is actually beginning, we're in the process of getting it started. When that begins, we'll be contacting them to work through it, and offered to meet with them in person. He did call my office today and, and had rather an aggressive, unpleasant discussion with our administrative support people, where he doesn't want to meet with city staff, he only wants to meet with the city council, which is fine, he can contact the city council if he'd like and have a meeting with them. We've, we've offered and tried to provide the opportunity, you know, with each contact we've had, we've been threatened with litigation. All I can say is that we've got a process in place that we would like them to participate in, so that we can get the information that I believe the council would want to be, to be comfortable in how it sets its sewer rates in the future. Until we have the information, I think really all our hands are tied, other than trying to do some outreach and, and communicate that to him, which we have.
Okay, and so I, I guess that doesn't need to be necessarily reflected in this part of our minutes, but, so we'd be okay with that. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve this particular item.
Make a motion to approve item 7F.
And I'll second it. Yeah, you know, since I pulled it, so. Do you need roll call on that?
Sure.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.